Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Got your own seats. Good to see everyone, whether you're in person or on social media. It's good to have you to tune in to the business of the Liberty County Board of Commissions. We do have two meetings. Our first meeting is the second, first Tuesday of the month. And then, of course, this is our third Thursday, which is considered our mid-month meeting. Both of them, we entertain the business of the county. So, thank you for either being here in person or tuning in today. At this time, we're going to have our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Thiff, can I ask you to do our prayer for us?
Yes, sir, you sure can.
We're going to give Mr. Moses just a little bit of a...
(laughing). Moses, pray. Dear Father, we do thank you for the day that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Lord Father, I pray that you have watchovers and protect us. Give us the insight, the knowledge that we need to make the best decisions that we need to make for our community and for the citizens of Liberty County. In Christ's name I do pray. Amen.
Amen. Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
That invitation is a good lead-in. This is Women's History Month, and we are proud that Commissioner Thiff is our long FEMA representative. But she, she holds it down well.
Thank you.
So, we are proud of her service, and we honor you today as you serve and sacrifice for District 3, and you've served so very well.
Thank you.
We appreciate your service and look forward to many more years of working with you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Proclamation, Red Cross Month. Dr. Karen Bell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to first introduce Ms. Maria Santos. You want to tell me who you are?
I'm the Executive Director for the Southeast Georgia Chapter of Red Cross, which includes Liberty County. I'm thrilled to be here.
Good to have you.
She traveled all the way down from Savannah to be here with us, and we are so grateful to be able to talk about the American Red Cross. This is the Red Cross Month, and when people hear about the Red Cross, they always think about the blood. Oh, they trying to take my blood, but they don't know that the Red Cross also have disaster and training. And being a Red Cross volunteer, they also make sure that you have the training. And I was able to use my training, I just thought about this, in a couple of occasions when I had to help a family member who was choking. And it was because of my military training and the training, my CPR training that I got with the American Red Cross, that I was able to help that person, a two-month-year-old baby. I was in for a service called Stop Breathing. And because I had my training from the American Red Cross, I was able to bring that baby back to life and assist the first responders that came onboard after that. And then, I think about when I was going down Highway 144 at three o'clock in the morning, going to Detroit, Michigan with my son, and we came across a three-car accident. We're the only ones on the road. Have you ever been down that road? It's dark. And me and my son seen this accident. We were able to stop, assess the area, put the person who was going into shock that was in the first car, and gave first aid to the other two, other three passengers in the other two cars. And I contribute being able to assist with that because of the training that I got with the American Red Cross. We're also able to help our young children in school now with the training about fire. And I don't know if you want to tell them a little bit more about our fire plan?
Yes, we do fire safety education and free smoke alarm installations in neighborhoods that we deem to be high-risk for fires. And we work with our partners, your fire department, to, to do these things. And I just wanted to, since we were talking about Women's History Month, I did want to just take a moment to recognize Clara Barton, who is the founder of the American Red Cross. And our mission at Red Cross is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of disasters by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of our donors. Karen serves as our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Chairman on our Board of Directors, and she is a wonderful leader for this organization. I wanted to say one more thing, and then we're going to let you guys get to your meeting. But we now have hired, finally, after a two-year vacancy, our Service to the Armed Forces Program Manager, who will be stationed, who is now stationed on Fort Stewart. So, her name is Katie Davis, and she comes to us from Fort Gordon. And she has completed two tours, two deployments with Red Cross, a six-month deployment in Kuwait and a six-month deployment in Poland. So, she's very experienced, and I know she'll be a wonderful asset to your community. And we want to thank you for letting us proclaim March Red Cross Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Who has the proclamations? Do you do, sir? All right.
This is the Proclamation, Liberty County Board of Commissioners for American Red Cross Month. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our neighbors who aid families in need every day in Georgia, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives every year as they carry out the organization's mission of preventing and alleviating suffering. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our great state and exemplified by our neighbors, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the organization more than 140 years ago. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for Georgia residents in need, local families have relied on Red Cross volunteers for comfort and hope while coping with various emergencies. Between July 1st, 2021, and July 30th, 2022, the Southeast Georgia Chapter of Red Cross, Red Cross responded to 290 local disasters, mostly home fires, helped 416 families with food, shelter, and hope, collected 17,701 units of blood, trained 7,393 people in life-saving skills, provided 6,068 casework services to members of the military, their families, and veterans, enabled 1,405 youth and adults to be better prepared and made safer, and supported 300 volunteers who worked 16,521 hours. And whereas additionally staffed and volunteers from the Southeast Georgia Chapter deployed to natural disasters like hurricanes, wildfires, and tornadoes, and help people by addressing their urgent needs, including food, lodging, and recovery support. And whereas the support, volunteerism, and generous donations from those inspiring individuals are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. And now, therefore, I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Liberty County and Georgia, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. A witness, therefore, I have unto here set in my hand the 16th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2023, of Liberty County of the State of Georgia.
If you all will come. Commissions, if you'll gather around so we make this a FOTAC moment for, yet another FOTAC moment for Dr. Bell. She's had her share. And while they're coming, I was reminded, you know, there's nothing, I guess the word is more comforting than when there's a disaster on TV, they always announce that the families are being assisted by the American Red Cross. And I also reminded of friends of mine that live in countries outside of the U.S., they often would mention how blessed we are to have organizations like FEMA in the USA, because in third-world countries, there's no one to depend on. It's all on you. So, we appreciate the service that the Red Cross provides. Thank you. And oftentimes, people ask me about volunteer opportunities. I'm just going to say, the queen of volunteers is Dr. Karen Bell right there. If you need volunteer work, just give her a call, and she, she'll help you out with that. Thank you all. Departmental reports, LCPC, Mr. Rickenson. Hello, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission. Our first presentation today is a gateway recommendation from the Liberty County Gateway Committee. They met last Wednesday, and they have a recommendation for you on the BlueScope site plan. You'll recall, y'all approved the BlueScope rezoning after a thorough vetting last month. And so, the next step is to go through the gateway review process and then begin their, their permitting and construction process. So, this, the owner here is CMJ Investments. They're the property owner still, LLC. And the developer is BlueScope Properties Group. And I've got a couple of representatives here in the audience if you have any specific questions from them. But you'll recall when we presented this rezoning, they, we showed a conceptual plan at the time of three very large buildings in the neighborhood of, one was over a million square feet, and one was about 800 square feet, and another one was about half, half a million square feet. They've, since, since that time, they have reduced the size of the buildings, but they've increased the, the number of buildings. So, they're, rather than having three very large buildings, there are six more modest-sized buildings. And most of them are around 250,000 to 270,000 square feet, but there is one larger building that's 400,000 square feet. So, I'll show you how those are going to be laid out in this, in this complex in a moment. So, you'll recall, this is the, this is the, the area that you all rezoned last month. And of course, this is the Hooker property, and Trayport East is across the way there, I-95 and Islands Highway coming by. So, this property does front on Islands Highway. And I'll also point out, you, you recall a lot of discussions about Dorchester Village Road, so it goes down to the rear of the property and ties back into Islands Highway. So, the new site plan is, as shown here, out front here is Islands Highway. You can see how the buildings are laid out. The, the larger building is there, just behind the 100-foot buffer on Islands Highway. And then, the building, the smaller buildings are arrayed back to the rear of the property, further removed from, from Islands Highway. You'll, just to kind of remind you of what the conditions that you put in the, in your approval of the zoning, they're still here. This berm over here on this side of the property is still there. I'm going to show you some pictures of that berm. It's a 10-foot berm, and it's already got vegetation, some pretty large trees growing on it. So, it's a pretty effective berm. In addition to that, there's a 50-foot space, wide space buffer there along this entire property line. Now, in the rear, which is the property, this, this more or less parallel to Dorchester Village Road, there's a 100-foot buffer back here. And I want to point out that 50/50 of that buffer is on the BlueScope property, and the other 50 feet buffer will be in the form of an easement on the, the remainder of the Davis property. So, together, that, that adds up to 100-foot buffer. You can also see they've, they've placed the ponds in the rear of the building complex as well, so that gives a little bit more spatial distance between this development and the properties down on Dorchester Village Road. The, there'll be two entrances to the project, one here, more or less directly across from the Hooker entrance, and then one in the rear, more or less directly across from the rear entrance of Hooker, and also the rear entrance of the, the existing BlueScope building, which is over in the Trayport East industrial complex. You can see here the, the way the buildings are laid out. The, the truck loading docks are located to the interior of the buildings, on the exterior sides of the buildings that face away from the, the center of the property, that's where the automobile parking is. So, they've done a good job of keeping the loading docks interior. The loading docks are on the interior walls of these two buildings and on the interior walls of these, these two buildings. So, they won't be, none of the loading docks are facing outward to the, to the exterior. Same with these two buildings, the, the truck loading areas are on the inside, the automobile parking areas are on the outside. And the same, of course, with the big building in the front. The front building here is auto parking and pretty much a, a continuous solid wall. And on the, on this side, on the interior of the site, is where the, the truck loading bays would be. That pretty much kind of covers the overview of the site plan. There'll be two signs, one located here and one located here. I'm going to show you a picture of what the signs will look like as well. And that's a picture of what typical prototype of the, of the building. You can see the, the blue, and it's, it's tilt-up concrete. They'll all be tilt-up concrete. The windows are just glass windows with aluminum casings around them. And then, of course, you can see the, the doors there. And of course, a metal, a metal canopy on the, on the building as well. And those are just the elevations. You can see the different elevations, like this is the interior elevations that we saw earlier where the loading docks are. That's the, that's the opposite wall from the loading docks. You can see that's got, it's got some, it's broken up by color and different, different elements in the design that kind of break up the, the long, monotonous wall. And then, you can see the, the front elevations there, sort of the, I guess, the main facade entrance of the building. So, all the buildings will have this general appearance. And just the landscaping and screening, as I said earlier, the, there's a 100-foot landscape buffer along Islands Highway. This is the existing, where the, where the, where the main entrance of the project will be. And that's kind of a rendering showing what the building would look like behind the, the existing 100-foot vegetated tree, tree buffer. And then, just another showing, I mean, you can't, it's not, it's not going to be totally invisible from Islands Highway, but you can see that this, this 100-foot existing buffer will provide some visual break from the, from the buildings. And of course, this is just an illustration of the existing 1,200-foot buffer on the, on the Brigton Road side of the property. And as I said, there's a berm there, 10-foot tall berm, and this is a 50-foot buffer. And I'll show you a picture of what that looks like. That's how tall it is. I mean, it's, it's 10 feet tall. This was built when this was the Dorchester shooting, I think this was previously had a life as a Dorchester reserve, and that was built to, I guess, to contain the, the bullets or whatever, whatever they were shooting there, the, the shot. So, it's, it's 10 feet tall, and you can see that's got a pretty substantial vegetative buffer on it, just looking at the, the comparison to the pickup truck there. And just another shot of the existing berm. And that's just a, a picture of the, of the monument sign. I showed you, they're going to have two, two of these monument signs, one at each of the main entrances on Islands Highway. This sign is eight feet tall and 12 feet wide, so that's a total of 96 square feet for each sign. The lighting, they will employ down lighting, and it's LED lighting, and they will, they will use these external glare shields as well. So, they're going to do a photo, a photometric study, and they're going to make sure that all this, all the light is contained within the property. There won't be any light pollution. Gateway Board, as I said, met last Wednesday, and they recommended approval, unanimously recommended approval of the site plan as presented. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. And as I said, there's a couple of members here from BlueScope that can also answer more detailed questions.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, back up on your slides to the one you said where that they are, the loading dock will be inside. Okay, so, right there, the loading dock will be there and there, right?
That's right.
And here?
That's right.
And here?
Right.
Is that designed that way to help cut down on noise?
Yes. The, the folks from BlueScope were here during all the hearings, the public hearings that led up to tonight, and they've been very responsive. That's, that's why you see a lot of the, the additional buffering there, and then they've, they've made every effort to try to orient these loading docks to the interior of the site, so they'll have minimal impact on the, the exterior properties.
So, this is one of the, one of the duplications of requests that was within that?
That's right.
All those requests that we received?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, your driveway, entry, exit. Go ahead. Coming out to Islands Highway.
One there and one there, two.
Okay. Will these buildings be up and in operation before we have the opportunity to do any improvement on Islands Highway?
I'm going to have to let the applicant answer that question. I'm not sure about what the, what the timing is on it.
Well, the applicant can answer one part, but then, we need to know the answer from the governmental standpoint. Will we have the money to do the roadway before the building get up? We won't.
We won't.
But each of these buildings, under the, under the development agreement, each one of these buildings will pay their share of that road improvement cost.
To help us to get it on.
But, but it won't be enough to make it what we, what it should be?
I can't answer that question.
No, sir, it's about 25 million for that whole project, so, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. You have questions?
Yeah. The, there's a water retention, I see, in your top left-hand corner, the total pond size?
Blues.
And when they, the outfall to that, will, will go where?
Can I, can I ask the applicant?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, the applicant.
State your name, sir.
What I wanted to know is, when they fill up, where, where's it going to spill over at?
So all the water, by the, my name's Eric Wanko with Blue Scope Property Group. All the water makes its way from this side of the site to this side of the site. And it's kinda split in half, so these two ponds collect everything on, on this half of the site and it spills into this wetland right here. And then eventually flows down this natural, already existing ravine that's there.
Hey, what, what? Now to piggyback on Commissioner Stevens, if there's curb and gutter, and of course, we don't know exactly what we're gonna put out there, do we, Mr. Brown? I mean, on Islands Highway, we'll have some curb and gutter or whatever there. Will we be able to run that into, I mean, the shortest distance right there would look like it would be into their ponds? Have y'all talked to, to discuss that? Or where's our engineer?
I'd have to, yeah, I'd have to defer to Mr. Long on that drainage plan for that section improvement.
You understand what I'm saying, Trent, is, I mean, will you be able to?
So our, our portion of Islands Highway will discharge into that canal that runs all along this, uh, there's a canal that runs all along this side and it kinda starts peeling off and going right through, it through here.
Okay.
So all of our water will be going through this canal. So all their water's gonna be designed to meet their ordinance for their site. And we can look at some possibilities of routing some of our water through theirs as well, if we needed to. But at this point, we had planned to keep the water separated.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
My, my observation is, this is, plan has changed since we saw it last time, layout has. And I can appreciate what you all have done with this. And I appreciate you hearing the, the citizens and responding to, to the citizens. The, and I, I tried to make some notes. Ten foot berm, fifty foot space buffer, and then on the rear side, a hundred feet.
That's right.
If I got it right and so forth. All right. And then when the lighting, you're doing the down lighting to try to ensure that the lights that make it Christmas down there.
That's right.
Yeah. So I, I appreciate you guys doing that, being sensitive to the community concerns without us even asking, so. 'Cause I know we were talking about one building at first, weren't we? Now, as Commissioner Stevens mentioned, you know about our impact fees. That's to help us to ensure that that road is safe because that's one of the, you heard the citizens concerned, if you were here about that too, so. So that's, that's part of the progress here in Liberty County. But I really wanna applaud you all for, for being accommodative and being sensitive to what the citizens were, were requesting. It, it means a lot and speaks well for your company. Speaks well for your company. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna point out one more thing. This, this is a high level design. This is going to inform the county's staff when they review this. Y'all asked some technical questions about the drainage. They're, they're gonna have to get more, more in depth than, than we're gonna get here tonight. So I just want you to know that it's gonna be a, a harder look at this from your engineering staff than just what we're talking about here today.
All right, thank you. We're starting something.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we don't want to, in any way, adversely, adversely affect anyone that lives in that area. I will say this, this is a common, comment I have heard from a few people that live in the area recently and they've been positive about what's done. And I will say this, I've been approached by, I'll just say, a neighboring county who, who's interested in how we've done this thus far. So it speaks well for the process. And I did, I think, last time, I thanked Jeff, you and your staff and my county staff. But I want to thank the commissioners too for embracing this. And Joe and I reminded that Ms. Marsha Hamilton and her group came to see us after we first, just came, first came to us and we sat down and tried to configure something that everybody could live with. And then we talked to the developers, not just these guys, but others too. And thus far, all of them have been, I use the word accommodative, insensitive to what our concerns are. We appreciate that. So I think, at the end of the day, we're gonna be proud of this. I like, I like to make this a, a model, if you will, you know, for other areas, certainly a model for Liberty County. And I'm glad you, you have a nice looking buildings, not just building, tin buildings, like maybe Gateway wouldn't allow just tin buildings. But we appreciate the aesthetics of it. So if you're gonna do it, do it right. So once again, thank, thank everybody, all those who participated in this process. Now, this requires our approval, sir?
Yes, sir.
After Gateway, Gateway approved it unanimously?
It did.
It did, all right. Commissioners, it's our turn.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the Gateway Board, which was approval of the site plan for Blue Scope.
Motion second.
Okay.
Motion second, we approve Gateway's recommendation for Blue Scope. And once again, we commend Blue Scope for what you brought here, looking forward to working with you. Make us proud, make us proud. All in favor, a show of hands please. Any opposed, one opposition, okay, motion passes. Thank you, Miss.
Thank you. Okay, our second and final presentation this evening is a rezoning request that's been.
Going to public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Chair, take a motion, go in the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion in second, all in favor, show of hands please, now in the public hearing for a rezoning petition.
Thank you, sir. This is a rezoning petition that's been submitted by JPC Design and Construction. It's also known as Jones Petroleum. On behalf of the Michael Brand Trust, who is the owner of the property, they wanna rezone five point seven nine acres of property that's in the unincorporated area. The rest of the site, it's a, it's a much bigger site than that, but the rest of the property is located in the city of Midway and will be considered by Midway City Council next Monday night. Anyway, the portion that's in the county is currently zoned ER one and they need to rezone that to B two and also get a conditional use for that as well to accommodate for truck parking. And they wanna put in a travel center with fast food restaurants, including drive, drive through lanes and semi truck parking. Most of the area that you were consider, you'll be, you are considering tonight will be used for the semi truck parking in the rear of this building. This property is located on Highway eighty-four, west of Interstate ninety-five. And you can see there the parcel number. We've advertised this in the Coastal Courier and also placed a sign on the property. The vicinity map just showing I ninety-five here, Oggleport Highway going back toward Midway and Heinzville. And you can see here, this is the property outlined in red. The blue line there, the little blue triangle there is a portion of this property that's outside the city limits of Midway. Midway, Midway's city limits goes about seven hundred and fifty feet from the right of way of Islands, I mean, of eighty-four away from that. And so everything beyond seven hundred and fifty feet is in the county. So you can see this area here is the five acres that you're considering tonight for rezoning to B two. And that's just another showing the zoning. This light blue there is Interstate Commercial, that's Midway zoning category for this property. And they will be considering a conditional use approval. But the building and, and most of the, most of the developed part of the property will be within the city limits of Midway. But this back portion back here was needed for additional truck parking. And this is just the jurisdiction map. The yellow area there is in the city of Midway. The other area here is in the unincorporated Liberty County. This is their narrative. They're asking for the property to be rezoned from ER one to B two and also a conditional use permit that will allow for them to develop this commercial travel center, which will be located both in unincorporated Liberty County and in the city of Midway. And they've got a concept plan that I'm gonna show you in the next slide. This building's gonna be just over thirty thousand square feet of building. It's gonna contain a convenience store and then fuel sales, fuel sales for automobiles and semi trucks. It's gonna have a trucker lounge and three quick service restaurants as well. And there'll be two drive through lanes associated with it. There will be forty multi product dispensers for automobile fuelings and nine diesel fueling multi product dispensers as well. There'll be certified CAT scales there on the property for semi trucks. There will be a convenience store, will have a total of ninety-six parking spaces for automobiles. And there'll be fourteen parking spaces for RV, bus and commercial trucks, as well as eighty cars under the gas canopy. So this is gonna be a very large facility. The semi truck parking lot in the rear will have a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces for customers. And there'll be one entrance on Highway eighty-four across from the Glee Plantation Road. And of course, as, as you're gonna hear a lot, that, that, that entrance will have to be coordinated carefully with what the county is doing on Highway eighty-four, the county and Midway in partnership with the improvements they're making on Highway eighty-four. So this is the concept plan that they've submitted. This is the entrance into Glee Plantation Road there. And this is their proposed entrance here. They are definitely gonna have to do a traffic study as part of the site plan for this project here. Again, this portion, this front portion from here back is in the city of Midway. The area that we're, that you're considering tonight is the truck parking area in the rear. And it's about five acres. You can see here, the automobile fuel canopy's here, the thirty thousand square foot building, mixed use building here, and the diesel canopy back here in the back for the diesel fuel. You can see entrance road here. There's also, the entrance road is also accommodating access to the properties in the rear 'cause there's a good, a good number of properties here in the rear that would benefit from having additional access. So this, this road here is not just for the benefit of the truck stop, but it will also be benefiting development in the adjacent properties. There are also two out parcels on, on each side of this entrance road here. Those will have to be, there's not a, there's not a known tenant for that at this time. Those will have to be independently approved by the city council of Midway when that tenant is identified and they're ready to develop their sites. Our zoning analysis, this property does have reasonable use as it's currently zoned. The proposed using is consistent with the J-LUS study. Number three, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan because the comprehensive plan indicates this property as commercial. Will there be adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We've indicated there possibly, but buffers shall be considered as part of the gateway design review. This is, this one is going through gateway design review as well, just like the previous one from Blue Scope. Number five, is it proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? Yes, there are multiple commercial uses in the vicinity. Number six, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on streets, transit, public safety utilities, schools, et cetera? And we've answered that yes. A traffic study will be required at the site plan review to mitigate the adverse effects caused by this development. Traffic is really the main, the main concern that we have. And we, we believe that a traffic study, if its recommendations are followed, will mitigate any, any negative effects from this development. Number seven, will this allow a short term gain at the expense of our long term local goals? Our answer is no. Would it cause a domino effect or encourage sprawl? Answer to that is no. Are there unique historic sites that might be adversely affected? We've answered that no as well. Number ten, is it in a flood hazard area? No. Is it spot zoning or unrelated to existing pattern of development? Our answer is no. And we also have not identified any unique conditions that support approval or denial. The planning commission heard this request at their last meeting and they recommend approval with standard and special conditions. I'll go to the special condition. Number one is to, the entrance to the proposed site shall accommodate the, the adjacent properties with roadway access. I showed you on that concept plan where they are proposing a road going all the way through the site and out the back so that the next property could be, could have access to the, to Highway eighty-four. And number two, a traffic study would be, shall be required at site plan review to mitigate any adverse impacts called, any adverse traffic impacts caused by the development. So those are the two special conditions. Other than that, the planning commission recommends approval. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about.
Do you know how the traffic study process works? I think I'm following you, but just to make sure that everyone's on the same sheet of music, tell us, sir, how.
The, you hire, hire a, a qualified traffic engineer, somebody that's registered as a traffic engineer, to do the study, to do traffic counts and, and look at the projections of traffic coming in and out of the site and that the, the characteristics of the tra, of the traffic. 'Cause in this case, we've got a lot, a lot of tractor trailer traffic and automobile traffic. So they'll need to look at the, the scale of this project and try to determine what kind of impact that's gonna have on Highway eighty-four and make recommendations for improvements, which might include a signal, additional turn lanes in and out of the property and just everything that needs to be considered as, to make this project integrate into the highway system.
Now, that's US eighty-four, right, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
So if the traffic study should indicate that a traffic signal is indicated?
That's right.
Is DOT and automatic partner, or we request their partnership? How does that?
I think if the traffic study indicates that a traffic study is needed, that will, that will be a condition of approval of this, this project. They'll, they'll have to figure out a way to get that in there, whether it's the developer paying for it or in, in partnership with GDOT or whoever.
I see.
It will be a condition.
DOT will have to issue an access permit for them, for the project.
I see.
They'll apply for an individual permit to GDOT.
Then I would imagine the traffic study is underway or they wouldn't start that until we, we do.
I think they'll, they'll wait until they have approval from you and Midway before they invest.
Don't count the chickens before they hatch, however it is.
Right. That's, that's what I was looking at. We, we approving this 'cause this is almost a, a, a three step deal the way I look at it. The traffic study, the county, then the city, I correct?
That's right.
So we approve it, but traffic study says one thing and they don't, they don't agree to it, then it's out the window.
That's right.
I did take the liberty, Commissioner Stevens, of, of checking with Mayor Clancy. I knew y'all went to Midway, didn't have a forum so they couldn't vote. I did just check with him, to, to check the temperature. He said, "My whole team supports it," was his answer. "My whole team supports it."
Now, this is gonna, this roadway that we talking about is, how many feet is that from the?
I don't know exactly what the, what the distance is back there. I mean, it does, it does kinda wrap around the, the edge of the property. I'm sorry, I did not measure how far that goes back. But it, I mean, it goes, it goes to the rear, out the rear corner of this property.
Okay. Now, the other que, I guess, question is probably, the water and sewage is gonna have to come from Midway?
That's right.
Okay, so we're only looking at the parking lot, the rest section?
That's right.
And that roadway will be paved?
Yes, sir. It'll, it'll be paved to county standards and actually heavy county standards because it's gonna have.
Trucks.
Truck traffic.
Right.
Will Midway hear this?
I'm sorry, sir.
Will Midway hear this yet?
They will hear it on Monday night. Monday night at six o'clock.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have a, a quick question too. Going back to the zoning analysis, Mr. Rickerson. Number four, where it says about, will there be adverse effect on the value and the usability of nearby properties? You all said possibly. And then it's also discussed about the buffers with the gateway design review.
Right.
So how, how would that process work?
The. Like, there would be buffers along this, the edge of this road right here and there'll be buffers along this property line as well. So just to mitigate the, mitigate the effects of, of visual effects and, and hopefully some of the noise effects from the property.
Right, absolutely. I, I guess, so, will the gateway, is that just a recommendation from them?
Gateway Committee, just like you, you saw the Gateway Committee tonight.
Right.
That was a recommendation from the Gateway Committee. You had, you had to act on it, so you did. So that's, didn't that.
So, so would it come same way?
That's right.
Okay. If, if they do recommend that, okay. I was just trying to get some clarification with that, 'cause, you know, I, I just had a situation with adverse effect of, of value of a property, so. Made me think.
Was there, you sent out letters to the adjacent property owners? Were there any, were anybody here in, in favor? Come.
Yeah, proponent, yeah, proponent probably speak first.
Just, tell us who you are, sir.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeremy Crosby with JPC Design and Construction LLC and Jones Petroleum, and we're the applicant.
Just give me your overview of your projects.
We, we've picked this site because it's a, it's called Midway and it, it's a good stopping point when you're coming up the road on I ninety-five and on eighty-four. And we're proposing to build a, a travel center. We've got one of these in Jackson, Georgia off Exit two oh five off I seventy-five. And we're, same floor plan and layout we'd like to do here. I thought we were gonna have a picture of the building. I thought we were going to have a picture of the building up, but it wasn't in the slide. But we're proposing thirty thousand square foot, three fast food restaurants, two of them with drive-throughs. This facility will have over four thousand square feet of restrooms inside for the traveling public. When you're traveling up and down the interstate, you usually want to stop at fuel, food, and use the restroom, and, and get back on, and, and head on north, or head south, wherever you're, you're going. But it's a nice facility. It has, the building has a lot of glass, skylights in it, it's well-lit, very open, and just a nice stopping off point. We're going to have forty gas fueling positions in the front, under the canopies, plenty of parking out front, and then the truck fueling in the rear. I don't know if y'all are familiar, the truckers have electronic logs now that make them, force them to get off the interstate and rest, and, you know, get food and fuel, and they need places to park, get fuel, just like the rest of us, and everybody loves Amazon and all the other companies delivering to your door. It takes all these truckers moving all these goods up and down the interstate and the highways to get these goods to our, to our front doors, like we like. So they need a place to pull off and rest, and fuel, and get food, and, and get back on, on the road. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions y'all might have.
Mr. Chair, all right. First of all, I just want to say thank you all for even thinking about Liberty County, you know, moving forward, especially, you know, from the economic standpoint.
Yes, sir.
What is the name of the one you were talking about in Jackson?
Exit two oh five on I-75. We, it's called JP Travel Center, and we've got a high-rise sign. If you're coming up, it's the I-75 and Georgia Highway sixteen, the Jackson Griffin exit. It's just, everybody knows where the traffic stops on I-75 at Locust Grove.
Oh, trust me.
So, I've talked to people from Illinois, Michigan, Ohio, they all know where the traffic stops on the south side of Atlanta in Locust Grove. So we're one exit to the south.
So don't blame you for the traffic.
Yeah. We, a lot of people get off at our exit, our travel center at Exit two oh five, get fuel, and then go the backways around to get up around Henry County and get on north to Atlanta, or south, headed this way. So it's Exit two oh five there, and we built the facility and opened it in November of 2019, and it's, it's been a big success. It's been featured in several magazines, national publications, convenience store magazines, fueling magazines, and different outlets have, have highlighted it, and it's been a big hit with the public. One thing we do have that you don't usually associate with the convenience stores and fuel, is we've got about a two thousand square foot gift shop, gift area in the store, that it has shocked us how successful it's been. And Natalie Jones, daughter of Mr. Jones, she heads that up, and they stock all kind of stuff, and when my wife goes in there, she spends a lot of money. But...
Sort of like, like the other company. I don't, I don't want to say their name, Starwood Beach.
It's sort of like...
You know exactly which one I'm talking about.
They're not us, and we're not them, but we all do similar stuff.
There we go, there we go.
So, but it's more, you got the gift shop, you've got the food, you've got the fueling, the restrooms. There's a lot of reasons for people to get off the interstate, spend money in your county.
Sales tax.
And the good thing is, they spend it, and they get back on, and they go somewhere else, but you got some dollar bills out of their car pocket when they stopped here in Liberty County.
And the beautiful thing about technology, I'm taking, I'm looking at it right now. So it has like a Subway and a Burger King?
Yes, sir. We have a Burger King, a Dunkin' Donuts, and a Subway in that facility.
And the mascot is a bulldog?
Yes, sir.
I like that. I like it, I like it.
Mr. Jones wants the next ones we build, this one, he wants a bulldog out front of it, just like that.
I see people are taking pictures in front of the bulldog.
Yeah.
Pretty cool. Yeah. But I, I, I like the concept. Like I said, I guess up there, one of my concerns is with, with the trucks. I know the seventy-five, I'm very, very familiar with that area, and just like you were saying about the digital logs, I've noticed a lot of times with, I guess with travel centers, that a lot of the trucks, they run out of space, and then they try to park on the side of ninety, well, ninety-five or definitely seventy-five. What, is, is there anything we could do, or I guess talk with the GDOT, or, I, I don't even know how that even works. I just know that, that's a safety concern for me, though.
GDOT says that they're like, three thousand parking, truck parking space is short every night across the state of Georgia.
Oh, yeah.
They're wanting facilities put in, and just like the guys that are going to be delivering to BlueScopes places, they need a spot to park for a few hours at night, get food, fuel, get their pickup, and get back on the road. So we're, we run a business, but we're also providing a service that's needed in today's economy.
Absolutely.
With the e-commerce, with everybody wanting everything delivered to your door, so.
Yeah, technology is, is a funny thing now. All right, I, I think for the most part, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm reminded, I think, what we can envision is like you going through the Richmond Hill exit, you know the trucks coming in and out, travel center there, so it'll be the same, same kind of thing. But we're working with Trenton, working with everybody, you know, trying to, you've heard that conversation, too, trying to make that a safe place to travel for, for folk getting in and out, as well as the local residents who live in that area. And I did, though, ask you to consider some, give it a little character, and you all worked on that, I heard.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that. Don't want to build just a box.
No, no. The facility like Jackson and this one, what we propose, has got different finishes, like on each restaurant side, and then see store, and different colors and variations throughout. So, yeah, it'll, it'll be an attractive, attractive facility. And like I said, it's got a lot of natural lighting on the inside, a lot of skylights, glass, and during the daytime, you don't even realize the lights are on just from all the natural lights. So it's got a, and when you lighten stuff up, it makes people feel better, it's a clean feel, feels good. Some of our competitors still a lot darker inside and stuff, so.
And I know that.
Just a bit.
Mr. Ratcliffe had some estimated sale tax projection. I don't remember those numbers, but I remember they were very positive.
We ran, I've got them here, just...
Do you have them?
Yes, sir. This is based, we took the sales of our Jackson, Georgia, location, and then plugged them in based on Liberty County's tax rates, and on the gas, if we paint, pump the same amount of gas, and actually here, we expect to pump more gas, because we have more fueling positions here. At Jackson, we just didn't have any more space to get them. So at, if, all things being equal to Jackson, the gas tax, four hundred and ninety-five thousand to Liberty County on gas tax, the diesel tax to Liberty County would be four hundred and seventy-two thousand. The, just take rough property tax on values, depending on, the values be a hundred and twenty-two thousand roughly in property tax, if it was the same as Bucks County. And then sales tax from inside sales, with Liberty County's rates, would be five hundred and fourteen thousand collected. So it'd give you a million, a total of over a million six a year in sales tax revenue.
Outstanding, my friend, outstanding. Commissions, I hope you're reminded of our commitment as a community, not just us, several years ago, to help to make that interchange be more productive. This is certainly moving in the right direction, that our interchange is growing. We appreciate, I'm like Commissioner Frazer, we appreciate you having interest in, in Liberty County, and we look forward to, to this project. But we'll call it by its own, and we won't call it other place.
That's right, that's right.
Thank you. Any other questions, brothers and sisters? Yes, sir.
Brown, Trent, okay, sewage and water is going to come from the city of Midway, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about the other services down there? Will it be county services or city services on like the fire service? Or will that be a duplication?
The, whatever, yes, right. Whatever's in the incorporated area would be Midway's, and whatever's unincorporated would be ours. So for the majority, it would be Midway.
Because what I'm looking at with that little piece that we got on the back, I'm looking for Midway to probably come back and want to annex that little piece on the back and give the whole nine yards. But it's not a bad, I mean, it's not a bad deal. But, anyway. Chair, are you ready for a motion?
The mayor may be listening.
I think so.
Right, I'm like, don't, don't, don't give them any... Ready for a motion, sir.
Chair, I make a motion, excuse me, make a motion that we, uh...
Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Stevens.
We just need to check and see if there's anybody in opposition.
Oh, I didn't do that. Jeff, any, did you have anyone in opposition, Jeff?
Not that I know of, nothing called, but we did advertise, so you know what I'm asking.
All right, all right. Anyone in opposition to the project?
Just, just one more. You don't even have to even come all the way up. I know you were talking about the, the gas pumps. How many gas pumps were, were you anticipating?
There'll be forty as well.
I'm sorry, I'm the one who told them to stay back.
We have forty drawn.
Okay.
However, I found out recently, in the last couple of weeks, that we can only, our computer point of sale, where you pay and everything, and credit card, can only handle thirty-two. So as of right now, unless the software changes between now and getting this thing built, we'll only, we're probably going to have to cut back from forty to thirty-two total pumps, which will give you sixty-four total fueling positions, because each pump you have double-sided.
Right.
So we did find out, we were ordered, looking at equipment and everything, and we told them how many we needed in the computers and POS's point of sales to support those pumps, and they came back and told us they could only, right now, do thirty-two, so instead of forty. So right now, we'll be maxed out at thirty-two, but unless the software, they can get the software fixed, and that's out of my league, that's our IT guys.
I was going to say, it's software out there.
Yeah.
I've, I've seen more pumps.
So, but they're working on that. We would like to do forty, but we may have to pull back to thirty-two, just because, if the software issue didn't get worked out.
Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Stevens.
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Chair, make a motion that we allow this rezoning to come from AR one to B two?
Second.
Motion is second.
Based on, I'm sorry, based on the traffic count.
It does, it'll be determined by that. Just, I'll make a comment, I'm thinking as this gentleman speaks, now our challenge is, how do we get those folk that stop to come on and visit Liberty County? So we've got something that happened to attract them here, and now we've got to get them to buy those gas and whatever else, but also maybe come and visit Liberty County, so.
I have an idea.
That's, that's our next challenge.
There was a sign one time that said, "If you build it, they will come."
Yeah, I've been saying it for ten years.
All in favor, show your hands, please.
Oh, heads up about another action that's coming next month that's related to this?
If you, if you keep us out of trouble, yes, you can.
Can you go back to that, that site plan, or just back to the presentation? I meant to bring this up earlier. There, the, when the applicant, when Jones turned in their application, they, they didn't submit the entire Bryant tract, and so they're, they went ahead, they wanted us to go ahead and move forward with this one, but there's an, there's an additional property right back there in the rear. That's an additional, is it five acres?
Yes, sir.
Additional five acres that they're coming back with a, it's, it's coming to the Planning Commission next week, we'll be bringing that to you next month. It's, it's additional, additional property. It's, it's, they're buying all of the Bryant's property, so they left that out of their initial application, so it's, it's beyond this road back here, but it'll be coming to you next month. So you'll, it, it's sort of related to this, but now this is, this is the truck stop, or the travel center property here, but this will be an additional property they're also requiring for future development. I just wanted you to know that. And then one other point that I wanted to make sure that everybody knows about is that there won't be any, any high-rise signs with this one. It might look a lot like the one in Jackson, but it, it, the, there won't be the high-rise signs, because our ordinance don't, don't allow that. The maximum sign in Liberty County is twenty feet. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Are you all willing to discuss any tentative plans for the, the future property to be rezoned, or not at this time?
Yeah.
The, the plan we have drawn now is for either a general commercial business on that five acres, or possibly hotels. So we, at Jackson, we built that first travel center, and a guy had five acres across the street from us, he built his first hotel, and he's filled, since 2019, he opened, he's built, it stays full every night, and he's built a second one now across from it. But this may be the same, same type idea that possible hotels could go on that, or truck service center or something, but brings in money to the county, though, revenue generator.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Motion to go out of public hearing back to regular session.
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson, we're counting sale tax, you want to come and... The commission's what I'm hearing also, and I hope y'all are doing your manual calculations. The more sale tax we have, the more roads we can pave, the more things that we can do. Empowers us as a county.
Good evening. Uh, we have completed the December and January financial statements, so I'm going to report on both of those months tonight. Finance is still digesting, so to speak, the, the loss and retirement of our former CFO and deputy CFO. Additionally, recently, we have hired two new people in finance to fill our vacancies, but we're now fully staffed, so we hope to be back on track when I come back to report on March's activity. Another thing I would like to mention is that we have been operating with ADP for months now, and the payroll processing side seems to be working very smoothly. Employees are getting paid on time, and, you know, things of that nature, yes, sir. Now finance is trying to tackle and reconcile the general ledger side with, so what actually gets posted into our system with the what's being paid. We had found some inconsistencies and are trying to work with ADP's implementation team to iron these out. But strangely enough, the, the time and attendance side of ADP, the time card side, the actual paying of the employees, doesn't really walk and talk with the general ledger reports that it generates. So we have found, you know, a lot of employees where they're, they're being paid out of the correct department, but when you go to put the journal entry into the system, they're in another department. So we're having to try to reconcile and, and pull it all together, but, but we're still working on that. So I say all of that because in some of our department variances, it's showing, you know, that some are over, and partly that's for this ADP stuff. Okay, moving on to December. At the end of December, we have collected approximately twenty-three percent of our budgeted revenues, and exhausted forty-seven percent of our budgeted expenditures. Currently, we are sitting at one point one months of operating expenditures, which I know is severely low, and this is down slightly from November, which was two point two. As you're aware, the months leading up to when our property taxes are collected are our leanest months of the year, and for this year, December was that month by far. However, you should start to see this turnaround once the property taxes are billed and start to collect, which I will highlight that in January. Moving on to solid waste. Let me go back, let me see. Did I miss something? Okay. Moving on to solid waste, at the end of December, solid waste has a net loss of approximately five hundred and ten thousand. You also see this turnaround in the upcoming months when the solid waste assessments are billed and collected. To date, we've collected almost thirty-eight percent of the total budgeted revenue for solid waste, and have spent approximately fifty-two percent. With regards to special revenue funds, E-911 is showing slightly over budget to, this reflects the payments made to Motorola for their annual contract, and this should start to even back out as we continue through the fiscal year. Going backwards to the general fund department expenses. So the items really that are showing, overages for, for the ADP or payroll-related items is going to be departments thirty-three twenty-one, Bureau of Police Services, also thirty-three twenty-six jail operations, thirty-seven hundred for the coroner, and thirty-nine ten for animal control. So we will continue to take a look at those, along with the rest of departments, and make sure the proper employees are coded and to the correct departments, and get all that reconciled. Admin, as I think I've mentioned in other months' reports, the variance in this department is for the, the reclassification and compensation plan, as well, as well as payments made to the Mercer Group. So this overage should continue to go down as we continue out the fiscal year. we continue out the fiscal year. A couple of, a couple of departments, including elections and EMS, they purchase capital items that were approved in the, uh, in the FY twenty-three budget, um, during the millage process, and so we will make those, uh, budget adjustments to move them over to those departments so they won't show negative. The law department is, uh, is ahead of schedule due to some payments made to attorneys, um, but we don't expect this to exceed budget for the year. Let's see, the public information department is running ahead of schedule due to the service award luncheon, and also we don't expect them to exceed budget for the year. General administration, um, paid its annual dues earlier in the fiscal year, which is causing them to show negative. Same for, uh, Superior Court, they made payments for law clerk expenses, um, and much of this was in the beginning of the fiscal year, and so they're, is still trying to catch up with the budget, um, so we should see this come down. Let's see. Uh, community services, the negative variance in this department is for the annual wellness fair that was held in October, um, so this is, you know, hits in one time of the year, so as we continue through this, this variance should reduce. The conservation administration, um, made payments to the Georgia Alabama Land Trust for site visits and monitoring of preservation of the land, there shouldn't be anything else charged to this department for the remainder of the year. Building and licenses is showing negative for, um, for some software, and this also was a, was a budget item that we, uh, that was already approved, so let's see. Regarding the debt service, um, this is showing negative for the, the enterprise payments or the enterprise vehicles that we've made payments on through, um, through Jan, or December. We actually have, um, to do an adjustment for the portion that's related to like the law enforcement vehicles, um, we have some money in sales tax six that we can help, um, cure this overage. And then the other finances and uses is, um, so the twenty-twenty-two bonds that were issued in June, we're now drawing down and using those for, um, the various projects that were approved for the bonds, so that's why you'll see this go up. The, the revenue was actually reported in the prior fiscal year, but now we're just showing those expenses. Let's see what else. For sales tax six, our revenue was one million thirteen thousand, it was another good month, exceeding our original expectation. At the end of December, we are about one point nine million ahead of schedule for the current fiscal year and six point four million ahead for sales tax six from when it started. We have a similar thing happening with T-Sploß, we have received over nine hundred and thirty thousand for the month of December and have collected twenty-three point five million since inception. Uh, the T-Sploß continues to do great and has brought in over six hundred and forty-four thousand in excess revenue so far from what was originally budgeted.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
T-Sploß, it runs until what year again?
It, it, it runs either for six years or, or till it sunsets because of the collections.
Right, absolutely, yep, there we go, thank you.
Are there any specific questions on December, otherwise I can go into January?
Go back to the enter, the enterprise for the vehicles.
Sir. So we have been making payments, I think as of the last time I, um, got an update, we had approximately ninety enterprise vehicles for the county, um, and a lot of those are law enforcement, and so there's some, there's a Sploß six line item for patrol cars that we were planning to, to use some of that to cure this overage for the, for the debt service.
So we did all of this enterprise last year and this year. For the rest of this year and next year, will it be a lower cost on enterprise or we still have to pay the same amount?
If you remember, uh, and we can go back and dig it up, the presentation was a five year, it was a five-year program basically, and so you had high, high years and low years. I'd tell you, overall, your enterprise cost will probably stay stable, the good thing, two things that'll happen is, uh, is the stability, is the new vehicles, and the other thing will be your lower maintenance cost on those vehicles, and we're, we're renegotiating that contract to bring to you, uh, on our maintenance vehicle fleet, but I think you'll be able to see, when you look at your maintenance records and stuff, that, that it's really paid off.
Joey, on this, uh, conservation administration, there's, part of this says it's for visiting the sites, um, how do we know that they're visiting all those sites that, I mean, there's a lot of people out here that are getting, you know, a certain amount of, uh, through this land trust, you know, they put their property in some type of conservation, do we know that they're going and looking at them?
Yes, sir, they do, uh, Georgia Land Trust, George, it's Georgia Alabama now, but they go and do two site visits a year, they document with photographs and then send us a report about anything that's wrong, not up to par with the conservation use agreement, uh, and then we have to notify the property owners to reconcile that or face, uh, civil penalties, really civil and maybe even monetary penalties for, for compliance, and, and we have had that occur, that we've had to do that.
We heard a lot more about them, and now, of course, I mean, you know, there's not that many people that's got, you know, that, uh, stuff in the land trust, but I just wondered, I, I do see it in Long County where they're doing it, but I just wondered, um, cause I know a lot of people that had their property in it, so I just, I just, uh, wondered if they were visiting or, you know, doing whatever, that's great.
And so, and so you may know too, is that, uh, the, we're talking really two types of different conservation use, I mean, you've got property owners that have conservation use activity that aren't visited by the land trust, cause they're in a, not in a perpetual conservation use, they're in an expiring conservation use that they can get out of, and that's monitored by, changes in that are monitored by, uh, planning commission and also by, uh, Board of Tax Assessors. These are, these are properties that have been put in perpetual green space maintenance, so they can never be taken out, and so these are the ones that are, are checked yearly.
Okay.
And it's checked by who?
Georgia, Georgia Alabama Land Trust.
Right, isn't that, they used to come give us a presentation, right?
They did.
Isn't that with that, with the attorney from Savannah?
They did, they did.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was before they convert, rolled over to Georgia Alabama, yeah.
Yeah, I remember that, yes.
I noticed some people, I mean, you, you typically get calls now, you know, about from Alabama folks, you know, I, the, one particular guy gets his, gets a call about once a month, but I think they're wasting their money when they talk to him, but anyhow, thank you, appreciate it.
January?
Okay, now moving on to January, um, at the end of January, we have collected forty-eight percent of our budgeted revenues and have exhausted fifty-eight percent of our expenses. This, we are currently sitting at three point six months of operating expenditures, which increased a good bit over January, um, and this is due to, uh, collecting a lot of the property taxes, um, those, you know, escrow, uh, escrow agencies and financial institutions who, who, uh, remit very early, yeah, so, yeah, so we're looking a whole lot better, fund balance wise, and, let's see, regarding the departments, so a lot of these that are listed are the same as December, so I'll really just kind of, um, hone in on the, the new ones that have kind of popped up for January, um, and let's see, uh, for elections, they're showing over budget for, um, for January, but this is due to, uh, the purchase of some voting hubs, um, and this was approved in the FY twenty-three budget, um, edited by the, the millage rate, so this will be a budget adjustment and this won't show on next month's report. The Board of Equalization, I think, again, has some, there's only a couple of people reported in that funds, and it's showing more in expenses for salaries and benefits than it should be, so we're gonna have to investigate who is not in the correct department, but we are definitely working on that. The Risk Management Department, um, was due to the annual pension payment to ACCG, um, and we don't anticipate having to pay anything additional, uh, through the end of the year on that, and I think most of these other ones are repetitive. Let's see. For solid waste, um, we're looking much better in January, and we had actually had a net income of a hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, the revenues are up to sixty percent of budget and the expenditures are almost in line at fifty-seven point, fifty-six point nine percent. This is also, uh, due to the collection of the property tax solid waste assessments, so that's kind of why things are starting to turn around financially, um, on paper. And let's see, for sales tax six, January, we brought in one point one-five, um, million dollars, and this is even higher than it had been averaging, um, probably due to Christmas, and the state collects it in the month of the sales and then remits it to us, uh, the following month, so there's, so there's a lag there, but, um, you can certainly see the benefit of, of the sales made, um, in Liberty County and as well as online, um, and throughout the state. At the end of January, we're two point three million ahead of schedule for the current fiscal year and six point eight million, um, over what we projected from when the tax first started.
Excellent, excellent.
Indeed, uh, we have a similar thing happening with T-Sploß, January, we received one point one million in revenues, um, and have collected a total of twenty-four point six million since this tax started. The T-Sploß has brought in eight hundred and forty-five thousand in excess revenue from what was originally bu- budgeted, and we expect it to continue to trend this way.
So that's a differential of what, like two hundred thousand from one month to the next, cause wasn't, that was six forty-five something, right?
Nine, something, yeah.
Something, okay, so.
That's about right.
One more question about T-Sploß.
Yes.
So, six years or whenever we, we hit the, the threshold.
Right.
Once we hit the threshold, how will we go with the process of, of renewing the, the next T-Sploß? Is, is it like a gap?
You, you don't have to have a gap.
Or am I putting the wagon for the horse?
No, you're good.
You don't have to have a gap, and I, and I, and I think, I want to, now that you mentioned that, look, look back in that sunset provision, that if it sunsets early, how soon can you go, and I'll do that.
Okay.
I'll be glad to do that.
Right, I, I just. If it's rolling. Try to keep it rolling.
Yep.
The citizens approval.
Absolutely, right, but I, I, I think the citizens, uh, definitely notice, you know, what T-Sploß has, has been able to, to do for, you know, for the infrastructure of the, of the county, so.
Uh, the last thing I have is, um, I believe you have all been given a copy of the, the CIP, uh, request for this year, and we, I just want to let you know that we're giving this to you today, just so you can start looking over it, but we will definitely discuss this in more detail at the planning retreat on March thirty-first, um, and that's all I have for you, unless you have any, any more questions.
So if I heard you right, though, some of the items that we set aside for millage, you've already purchased for some departments.
That was from the FY twenty-three budget, this is the FY twenty-four CIP, so, yes, we've, um.
So we have done some of those things.
In last year.
Yes.
Yeah, this, this is the look forward to the twenty-three.
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, we, we all sit up here and we were, one thing that we talked about a lot was our undesignated fund balance, I know Commissioner Thrift and I were talking about it on sidebar and some of the other ones were, but we're looking at twenty-two, at the end of the year, we had one point one month of fund balance, and the year before, we had two point nine months, now this, right now, we're looking at three point six months, and this time, last year, we had five months, so I know that there's people that have to go through the proper channels to spend the money, but, uh, there's nothing like having to go borrow, and I don't want us to have to go borrow, we, we, we talked long and hard about this and I hope we can hold the line, now I know there's, people, things tear up, I mean, Mr. Wells is sitting back there and he's gonna need a new piece of equipment, which the piece that he's got, he, I've seen it and I don't know how many hours is on it, I would say somewhere between twenty-five hundred and three thousand, but, there's things we need and then there's things we want, and this is a needs-based budget. If you need it, we're gonna have to, I mean, there's some things we're gonna have to take it on the chin and, and move on, but, um, one point one month of undesignated, unreserved, I mean, uh, that's, that's payroll, so, I just, um, I know everybody gets these little calls, but I don't pay them much attention, you know, the other night when we were talking here with our chief deputy, we told him, said, hold the line till we can get to budget time, and I mean, I, let's, let's make sure that we're all on the same accord on this, and that's all I'm gonna say about it, you the boss up here.
Chairman, I, I echo on that a little bit, I, I know that, um, one of the things that when we do adopt a budget and we go through that process, one of the last things that, um, that Joey always says is that, you know, that the things that we will do, how we will be, um, you know, real frugal with the, with the funds, I mean, that, that, how everybody will, you know, look at it twice before, before we decide, so for the fund banners to not be, um, what was this time last year, and we do know that things do change, but, um, you know, we, we do need to keep an eye on that, and I also heard, Mr. Chairman, that, um, there's gonna be a, a deployment, um, sometime this year?
In the fall.
In the fall, yeah, so, I mean, you know, which, so what was that?
Four thousand troops.
Yeah, yeah. But, but, but I know that, you know, we, um, the cities has, you know, put some stuff in place, that there was a time whenever there was a deployment where times it was a ghost town, so, you know, people, people stay, but, um, we still need to be, be aware of that and, you know, take all this into consideration, especially with our budget, and we'll be going through our budget process pretty soon, so we do need to, um, keep an eye on it, that's, that's part of our plan when we adopt it, part of our plan is to, um, look, look and look again before we, um, do anything, just because it looks like we got it, don't mean that we, that we have to spend it, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question along with those lines, I was just looking back here, the use of fund balance, that's in the red, why, why is it the same month to month, is? Using that a fun map, fund balance to?
To balance the whole general fund.
To balance it out? I noticed, you know, like October, what's it, October, November, December, or something like that, it's the same number, I don't know that it could be the same number if you're trying to, I mean, I didn't go through there and add up everything, um, but I don't think it should be the same number, but you're, well, you're having to draw it out of fund balance, so obviously that makes our, our months go down from one nine to three six or what, or up three six, but I don't, I think that number's not right.
Okay, I can certainly look into it.
And see if we're using, I mean, that much, yeah, it, it goes back and it's the same.
Same number.
Yeah, so I, I don't think that's right, but, uh.
Okay.
And that may, we may be in worse condition than we think if you're using that every month.
As a balancing mechanism, okay.
Yeah, mhm.
Um, I'll get with Heather and I'll certainly, uh, look into it and make sure that the budget is reported.
We're using fund balance to, to balance the report.
Right. Right.
And then that makes the month, what we have in reserve, go down.
Mm-hmm.
And it shouldn't be going down if, if we stay within our budget.
No, no, so, so if you look at it, yes, ma'am, if you look at it, it's really, it's really two different things we're talking about there. So you've got a designated fund balance, right? That is gonna stay the same because that stuff that got designated coming out of the budget shoot, now that's a combination of everything that's in the general fund or flows through the general fund. And so that's, that's one reason capital projects, as are identified in the general fund, would, would, would almost remain the same, hopefully remain the same and not go up during the year any. So, so that's something to keep you out. That, that is a lock-in that you said, look, we wanna designate this amount of capital money for this fiscal year period. And so you designated it. The other is undesignedated. And so the undesignedated, if it goes, it's, it's, it is the, the cash flow, right? Especially for the lean months as you get towards the end of the year, she pointed out. So, so your, your lowest fund balance ought to occur in December. I mean, that ought to be it, because you're not collecting anything. You're, you basically start living off of that after taxes are collected, right? So it's gonna go down and down and down and down, and then it replenishes in January. But the undesignedated is different. That, that other is a designated number. And it, it is what you have said. We want to spend this on capital.
Got it.
Uh, for designated items.
Okay.
Designated and undesignedated.
I remember that now.
It's important for this reason more than anything, is you don't wanna make it to spend it. It's important for us, if we do collect it, then we need to try to be sending some back to the taxpayers. I mean, I'm not just for up here collecting the money to say, we've got fund balance. I mean, we can roll some of it back. I mean, I'm, uh, I'm wanting everybody to have what they need. I don't want anybody to think that's not what my intent is. But when we were a little bit better off, we needed, and we didn't roll anything back to speak of, I don't believe, did we?
No, sir.
We rolled it uphill and now we pushing it back down, so.
So the best way, the best way to get in, we, we can, I made a planning session, I made a note. But the, the, the best thing that improves fund balance is, is not spending every bit of your budget. Savings every budget year to every budget year, you know, resisting the tendency that, oh, I hadn't expended my budget, let me go ahead and issue all these purchases or do all these things I wanna do, cause I can't get the money back. Savings in every department line item add up. And then that is that cash flow money you don't have to use, so it replenishes itself plus some.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and that's why we were able to absorb the fire department and EMS with this little fund balances, because we had built up the fund balance. And therefore, we didn't have to go basically on property taxes.
Well, yes, sir. The, the other key thing is to remember is that, you know, that replenishment or, or the, the savings only occur one time, right? During the year, there's no guarantee they're gonna do it again next year.
Right.
So, so, so that amount is there and you, what you've used it for rightly so. In fact, your fund balance policy says, if it gets to a certain point, you've gotta either, A, reduce that tax base that you're talking about, Commissioner Walden, or only use it for capital purchases, cause it's only a one-time there item, it's not gonna automatically be back. And so you've used it, instead of creating a capital budget and shipping money from the general fund to the capital budget, you said, look, we've got excess fund balance, undesignedated fund balance. We're gonna do ten million dollars worth of capital this year, draw it down from the fund balance and get us back in the shape. So that's kinda how that works.
Thank you for the in-service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Math. Let's see, now, I'm, I got you a little bit longer. All right, let's see, all right.
Yeah, we're good. I'm good.
Engineer, Mr. Long? And watch my time, cause I'm gonna lose Commissioner Thrift in about twenty minutes.
I'll do my best to go as quick as I can. So one of the things, I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Thrift. Uh, we're working good on.
Let me hear you, but not leave her alone. Commissioner Gillie, you heard it?
We're working good on, Mary Todd Road, making progress on those plans.
Okay.
Also, we had done an estimate for Commissioner Thrift for Will Cemetery Road.
Right.
Around three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that neighborhood. If you're real, ready for us to kinda start putting plans together on that, so we can get real prices, we'd be glad to do that.
I need you to go ahead and continue on with that project on Will Cemetery, Will's Road.
I will be glad to do that. The projects that are ongoing, the Trayport West and the fire station are moving along pretty good. Mr. Brown may have some other information for you on that, but those are looking good. I'm gonna hit a couple of highlights. Bill Carter Road should be in the paper today. I didn't look, but it should've been in the paper. They were opening the bids on April twenty-eighth for Bill Carter Road. It's in there. It is, okay. Um, the Miller Park, the asphalt's down. Got some striping to do and a little cleanup, so that job should get done soon. They are asking for a forty-five day time extension from some rain delays. That's Miller Park, yes, sir.
It's gonna rain tomorrow.
Got some issues down there. Got some issues at Miller Park that I noticed this morning.
Okay. If you get with me, I'll be glad to go address those issues.
Just let me run it by you real quick. When the water comes off the field, it comes straight across the, the walking trail.
Yes.
It does not, so if it's winter time or whatever, someone's walking right after it rains, they're gonna have to, if they're on the walking track, they're gonna be walking through the water, draining off of the field.
So, yes, let me look at that with you.
Okay.
On that, so some of the areas are, it was pretty expensive to try to fix something like that. And it, it only occurs for like a twenty-minute period after the rainfall event stops. So you and I kinda look at that.
Also, uh.
Are we talking about the fire station or? No, we're talking Miller Park Recreation Park. Good.
What are we gonna do about all of the rocks out there and cutting grass?
Yes, sir.
A lot of, ton of rocks out there.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get a lot of that raked up and cleaned up a little bit. Yes, sir. No, I'm, I know.
And also the catch spaces, they're gonna need, the lids gonna need to be taken off so they can be cleaned out.
Yes, sir. That is part of the punch list when we get to the end of the job that we make sure we go through and do.
Give me a call, I like to be around when that punch list comes.
Can do.
Let Mr. Chair, while, while we have Miller Park, just, just a quick question, Trent, about a NW.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we have, we have a requirement in there on that.
Okay, what was?
And we had ten and three.
Okay. And I, I know, late last year.
Yes, sir.
I requested some information.
Yes, sir. Now, I sent a spreadsheet on that for to you.
You did?
It's a little spreadsheet.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh.
Oh, you emailed it to me?
I did.
Okay.
I, I can send it again.
Trent, Mr.?
Email.
Trent, Mr. Brown. Was the septic, is the tanks supposed to be included in this project?
Ask me that.
For Miller Park?
Ask me the question again.
Was the septic system supposed to be included in this?
We have some dirt on this, that will be for the se, for the septic system. But the septic system will not be installed, just some dirt for it, so that we don't have to haul all the dirt in later on.
But it's, it's included in this part of the project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We got, and there's still a little bit of work to do on that out at Dunedin.
Okay. The last question or statement, we need to go ahead and jump and order those playground equipment that was damaged, cause it's gonna take a while to get it.
Yeah, and that was actually the contractor for the fire station that did that. So, yes, sir, we actually were pushing on that. A couple of weeks ago, we had conversations with Raymond about it and with the contractor about making sure that those got replaced. Cause those do need to be replaced, they need to be replaced already. They're behind the time on that. So we kinda noticed that and, and brought that up with the contractor, it was like two weeks ago.
So who's gonna be here responsible?
The Miller Park Fire Station Contractor.
From, from Miller Park?
From Miller Park Fire Station, R.W. Allen.
Verbal or, or written requests?
Say it again.
Was it a verbal or written request?
All verbal.
Okay, yeah, can we?
Yep, we can get it in writing. There we go.
All right.
Not like a paper trail.
Got it.
All right, I will get that out in the mail and get you copies. And I'll send you that MBWBE stuff again.
Please, sir.
And it may not, it may have come from Michelle instead of me.
Okay, can you send it to my county in my personal? Just be on the safe side.
I can.
Thank you.
Get back to where I was. All right, we talked about Miller Park Fire Station, we talked about Miller Park Recreation Park Gun Branch. They should be out there very shortly with some asphalt going on. Um, so that should be getting ready, ready to wrap itself up. They're also asking forty-five day time extension for weather delays over there. We had to wait a long time to get that pad underneath there and it was just, oh, it was so wet, it's so wet. So, but we finally got it in and everything's going well there now. I'm not finished with my plans, but I got my guy working on them for the sidewalk on Elam Road and Elm Drive, not Elam, and Winhaven. So my guys, my guys, not, Elmen, Elmen and Winhaven. I said Elam a minute ago. Yeah, Elam is a different road.
Little bit farther out.
Water system for the Lewis Fraser Road bids next week. The Davidson Select Street bids next week.
Good.
So those two are coming along and I think I'll leave it to any other questions unless you want me to go over anything else on the status report. So, Mr. Chairman, I have just, just something, Trent, if you would, on your next report, I've, when I was, I've had the Homestead, there were some projects that I had committed to. And, you know, we had did some talk on it, but it added to your report, the track lane. And if tomorrow, Ed and I gonna go and ride, could, could you meet us down at the, at the park, say, at about eight-thirty in the morning? I mean, if you got something to do, then that's fine, we could do it another day, but, um, we're going down the way tomorrow.
I, I, I accepted a nine o'clock meeting. I'll try to call and change it till, we have another meeting at eleven. And I'll try to move it, hit the, the one that's nine, I'll try to move in the afternoon so I can see you guys down there at eight.
Yeah, okay, so track, at, let's say, track lane at eight-thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and.
And if, I, I'll call you and verify first thing in the morning.
Okay, yeah, yeah, give me a call. But, but if, if you would add track lane to, to your monthly report and clutter your lane, we, um, that's another project that, that we had talked about, Commissioner Stevens is, that's his district now, but that's that water project. And if we can just add that to the report so that we can, you know, have a track it once a month and, you know, I'll.
Keeps everybody honest on getting it done.
Yeah, so just, just add track lane to your report and I'll meet with you on that tomorrow. And then we'll briefly talk about, just get an update on clutter your lane. But I would like to have both of them on your report until we can.
I can do that. That's easy enough. And I did forget one thing that I wanted to talk about. Do have Limerick Road just about ready. I got a couple more days worth of drawing next week. I got a little plan for you to look at, but I should be ready into this month to put the overlay of Limerick Road out for bids. So, but I'm gonna leave this with.
While you're walking through, while you backing up, keep us informed on the Peacock and Nail Bridge, although it's a DOT project. And also the roundabout at one nineteen and Berthold Ferry. I've been getting a couple of phone calls. I think we need to have a little sit-down roundtable discussion with a couple.
Sure. Actually, next month, I'll have a pretty good conceptual drawing on that, so I can bring that and throw it up on the screen.
Okay, cause two pastors, Pastor McCava and, I mean Bishop McCava and.
Pastor Dawson.
Pastor Dawson and Ms. Wathour, who's right there. We need to at least sit down and go over everything with them so that they'll have a better concept of the amount of what's what.
I would love to do that. Be glad to do that.
Commissioner Giedt, I do have all the costs on the Claudio Lane project now. We got the last piece of that. I got the construction costs plus the possible acquisition costs, so we can go over that and talk about what we're gonna do on the fund.
Okay, okay, that'd be good, okay.
There it is, sir.
I tried to do it under twenty minutes.
Oh, you do. I just wanna.
Get the estimation on Sandy Run Road for the repair.
I did not.
Oh, for. And we have looped in the City of Riceboro engineer in that, Commissioner Stevens, since that is really in City of Riceboro out there, so that they would be aware of it, you know.
I've gotta call him tomorrow anyhow, on a different subject, and I'll, I'll loop him in.
Trent, how, how well, are you working with the DOT? You can, you can get them to show up. I know Gary and I, we sit out there, he had a shotgun on him in Allanhurst. I was just wondering, those ditches along eighty-four between Liberty High School down to DeGotion.
Well, I'm not dealing with the maintenance guys that often, but I could certainly put a phone call in and see if we can't get some movement.
His name is Brian, first name Brian.
Brian.
And his last name is Kimp, if you can't get ahold of them.
There's also, yeah, I, I fell for that one pretty good.
That's who we're gonna need to be talking to. I've been waiting twenty-two days. Had a couple of folks down through there, of course, you know, part of that's city limits of, of Flemington. But, you know, I was told that they were gonna look at it, and I think they've actually, that one person retired, me waiting on him. So now there's a, there's somebody else in there, so.
There's a guy named Brian Check that's out of one of this part of the maintenance. And that's who I thought you were talking about instead of the governor.
But if you can't get ahold of him, we can get Joey to call that other fellow. But it, it needs some attention from at least Liberty County High, coming from outside the, uh, the football field, going all the way to the canal on both sides of the road. There's about three and a half foot of water down through there, Clint.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a lot, that's it.
Yes, sir. Now, we had a, you know, a couple of months back when we were doing Edgewater Drive. We, it took us several months to get DOT to come clean. There's a box covert in the double S curve as you come into Midway. And it was, it had some blockage in it. And it was making water come all the way up in people's backyard along Edgewater Drive. And, you know, we had a hard time getting somebody to come clean that out, too. We, let's just, I mean, if we get, if we get a positive, that'll be great. If not, then let's look at it, see what it's gonna cost, and we'll put it out to bid and have them and just send bill to the state. I don't have, I don't care how we do it. I mean, I'm, I'm real easy. There's two ways of doing it, with a shovel or the DOT can do it. And, I mean, that's it, there's no other.
Yes, sir.
Water will start, when you start moving it out of the way, it'll go to that lowest spot. That's a real simple thing, so.
Yes, sir.
It's one, it's, it's one thing I found out that with DOT in the Liberty County, Richmond Hill area, they only have one piece of equipment to serve about five counties. Now, when you get up around Glensville where the big office is at, you got several.
Yeah. And a lot of times, our guys come out of Savannah, so which is second. I mean, you know, we got it, we got two offices in Liberty County.
Thank you, Trent.
DOT offices in Liberty County, one in Allanhurst and one down in Riceboro. And there's nobody wants to show up. There's actually a DOT office right now in, in Flemington.
Yes, sir, there is.
We need to, I mean, let's do what we gotta do. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you to spend much time, just call them and tell them.
Uh, my, one of my inspectors is DOT maintenance, former DOT maintenance guy, so I'll get him to call them.
Work through here.
See if you can't get in the back door.
I'm friends with the DOT, they help me out big time.
Try to get Crystal.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, how are you? So as you know, September last year was one year that we had become a service under the county. So what have we been doing that past? So, what have we been doing that past year? I've collected most of the information I thought would interest you the most to display. If you have any questions throughout, just please let me know. Otherwise, it should be short, sweet and to the point. This first page reflects what our call volume looked like. And as you can see, that our rate of just a little over fifty percent involved patients that were treated and transported by us to a facility. You can then see our next one, highest rating was treated and refused transport. What that means is that patients may have been treated on scene with either medication or simple wound bandaging, something simple. And they declined to receive further care in an emergency room department. So, our highest level definitely were treated and transported. Other ones on there, either we were canceled on scene, there was no patient found or they refused treatment altogether.
What, what, what is that? No patient found, canceled?
Those, because the way dispatch kinda works, sometimes we automatically get dispatched to a call with, depending what the call comes out of. And as we are en route or as we arrive on scene, there's absolutely no patient, no, no need for EMS. But to err on the side of caution, EMS is typically automatically dispatched due to the reference. We see that a lot in traffic accidents where because it's a traffic accident, everybody gets called, fire, police, EMS. But when we arrive on scene, it was just somebody hit a bumper in a parking lot. And there's absolutely no patient, no request for EMS personally by any individual.
That, that's a high volume though, right?
It is.
Seven hundred and seventy-five?
It is. But the way our dispatch is, not blaming dispatch, but the way we have to respond, once we are toned out, we can't pick and choose and decline not to go.
I understand.
Now, for our standbys, simple things like, that involve the schools, bomb threats, usually don't become anything. We stand by at the station. We don't even respond to the actual scene. We acknowledge the call, but we stand by at the station. For two reasons. One, scene safety. We don't wanna be that close in the event that it is something. And for two, if a more high priority call comes in that we know we have an active patient, we would then respond to that active patient and put that standby at a lower priority.
So, is that normal protocol, like in other counties as well?
Yes, yes.
I was just wondering, 'cause I mean, it's, it's not like we have a
Yes, and we are looking at ways that we could maybe mitigate the, for lack of better terminology, the misuse of EMS. This starts at the state level though, unfortunately. And so, we have more support from the state to trickle down and make us be the voice that, I hate to say decline the calls that we respond to. But we're an easy way for people to reach out when they may have their own transportation or a call that doesn't meet emergency to begin with. But once we make, once we're contacted, we have a duty to respond.
Right, I understand.
I know one call that we run pretty often off of.
There's a couple.
They, when we're with about, during a month's time, you probably go to that same house about ten times.
Ten times what, a month?
In a month's time.
We, we
It's only to help pick them up. That's it.
There's, there's several similar, just like that.
Yeah.
And, I mean, some are true. They don't have any help to help lift them up. And they fall and they don't have family or they don't have family strong enough to lift them and it falls on us at that point.
And it goes through nine-one-one?
Right. It's alert, the alert
Family code, they do.
And that's, I'm glad you brought that up, the life alerts, the medical alarms. Those are often faulty alarms where they may accidentally be activated. Pendant press gets activated and that's where you can see the canceled on scene or no patient found. It was an accidental push. That happens, that happens a lot, actually. Next slide is the state of our staffing. Our current schedule. We have one paramedic vacancy on our twelve-hour truck and one EMT vacancy on our twelve-hour truck. We are looking at by May, we wanted to start this after the first of the year, but by May, we want to fill three additional positions that had been approved for us to actually start in January, but we just didn't have the ability to do that. To replace our supervisors off of the trucks and replace them with medics. So that our supervisors can be in the streets with their medics, can be evaluating their medics, can be supervising them. Because right now, the way the supervisors are working, they're on trucks, they're on nine-one-one calls. So, if an incident comes in that needs to be handled at a management level, that supervisor's not available. I.e. a call in, unique situations, if there's a vehicle accident involving one of our trucks, worst extreme. Little things that we're actually paying for the supervisors to perform duties, they can't. Because they themselves are providing care in an ambulance unavailable. So, we're looking to get them off and that's common practice amongst most EMS services where the supervisor is supplied a QRV, Quick Response Vehicle, to assist their teams out in the field. And they can do a true evaluation because they're out there evaluating all their team members, not just the person, their partner that they're assigned to work with. So, that's where we look at the two and one, but as of today, we can take away one of those vacancies 'cause I fulfilled one of those vacancies. I'll take when I can.
Definitely not to be laboring thing. Last September, and I know your staffing's changed a little bit, but you, you were about half-staffed last September. So, so at this point, you've, and, and those were being staffed mostly, say mostly, but three-quarters by basic EMTs as availability. So, what we've been able to do, what they've been able to do and you've been able to do as a team, is obviously correct those staffing issues by what you did. And ensure that, for the most part, there's a paramedic on every shift that rolls with every call.
And that would be the extra advantage if we can have that supervisor come off that truck. Because the times that we have the most trouble filling a vacancy or an opening is that last-minute call-out. Because we rely on those call-outs to be filled by a part-time employee, but they're part-time employees for a reason because they probably have another job full-time obligated somewhere. So, then we're relying on our full-timers to possibly want to pick up overtime. We don't mandate it. We don't hold anybody. We don't forcibly keep them to work overtime. So, we rely on that, but we can only work them so much. We have some employees that would never go home if we didn't tell them to. They can't, they can't do that. There's not sufficient amount of downtime for them to run four days, twenty-four hour shifts day-to-day. So, with the ability of having the supervisor off the truck, in the event that we have a call-out, we could have a body to put on that ambulance until we get somebody to come in. So, I think it would, it'll benefit us all in the long run, once we can fulfill those.
What is your staffing like during the, during the holidays? Is it pretty good, a call-out?
Well, you know, so the convenient thing about EMS is that unless an employee requests a shift change, they know their schedule for the entire year, the next five years, to be honest. So, we can make accommodations and we take things into consideration. If you worked a holiday last year, if you put in for it this year, you know, if you, if you had the last two holidays off because we granted you that off, there's a chance you might not get this year. So, we have a way to look back on the history of when we approved people their off time and whatnot. It's not usually, it's not an issue as long as we're staffed. It's if we already have those existing vacancies that tend to be the issue because now your part-timers are probably not gonna wanna work on a holiday if they have that off already on their primary job, if that makes sense. So, as long as we're fully staffed, holidays usually are not an issue. This here just gives you a brief summary of a distribution of our calls. As you can see ironically, Tuesday seems to be our busiest day of the week consistently. Not far behind, or, I'm sorry, Friday, but not far behind is Tuesday. But if you look at all the days, they're generally kinda right on par with one another. Our busiest call times on average is between three PM and eight PM. That shows a consistent throughout the year for all the calls that we, we respond to. That, we kinda chalk it up to as when is our busiest time of traffic. That's the time our most vehicle accidents occur. So, there's where we have a peak time in our traffic accidents as well. This is a breakdown and I made an error. That should not be six thousand, that should be five thousand. I was giving ourselves too much credit for an extra thousand calls. So, just to be clear, that should be fifty-eight forty. Station one has responded to five thousand eight hundred and forty calls and Station two responded to two thousand six hundred and forty-five calls. Now, what this doesn't show is that I cannot sit here. I could break it down further. But this here does not show that there was only two thousand six hundred and forty-five calls in the Midway area. This means that Midway Station was toned to respond. That could mean they were coming to Heinzville for a call and vice versa. These calls for Station one, they were toned out, but it doesn't necessarily mean that these calls were just primarily ran in Heinzville. They could've been responding to a call in Midway as well.
What about transfers? Where does your transfers?
You're gonna see that right now. So, here is a running list. We've been keeping track of our transports. You'll see the blue indicates twenty-twenty-one, year twenty-twenty-one. Red indicates year twenty-twenty-two and gray, we just started. We're, obviously, we don't have March yet. But the gray is where we are for twenty-twenty-three so far. So, you can see over the course of time, we're blue in twenty-twenty-one. Then we took over, the county took over, I'm sorry. And we dropped down a little bit. Now, towards the end of last year, we started, our reds were coming back up again. They were actually superseding our blues where we were in twenty-twenty-one. We're starting to come back down, noted by the grays there. And you also see, from twenty-twenty-one, we conducted seven hundred and fifty transfers from Liberty and twenty-twenty-two, five hundred and ninety-one with a decrease of a hundred and fifty-nine. Not a whole lot. I do anticipate that number to be significantly different when we do this again next year for this year, as we've been working on some things with the hospital. This here, it's hard to see up there, but you'll see that these here are transport destinations for all the calls that we run. Either nine-one-one or if they were a transfer, you'll see that we do most of our patient transfers with Liberty Regional here in our own county. That's where we take most of our patients. If we see a need in the street that requires advanced care, that we know that maybe shouldn't be taken to Liberty because they may not have services capable of handling that, then we will then transport that patient to a more appropriate facility, which tends to be a hospital in Savannah. Sometimes Brunswick, depending on where we're responding to, if it's in the Riceboro area, sometimes it makes more sense to go to Brunswick at that point. You're not really too far from either one. There's a little line you can't, it's very hard to see on here, but we do have a one percent for Augusta, one percent for Dodge and two percent for Memorial Settilia, Settilia Health in Waycross. Those obviously are gonna be from our hospital transfers. Anything you see for Jacksonville, anything outside the Savannah area, that is definitely a transfer. Not to disclose that some of those Savannah runs were also as a result of some of our hospital transfers. Mutual aid because
Crystal, I did have one question. Are we picking up any coastal man or coastal man?
No, no.
They have their own, they do their own transport.
They do their own transports. Obviously, they're in Long County, so if it becomes a nine-one-one call, their service is responding to them. And if they're going back home, they're provided a service. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the hospital now has a van that they're able to take some of their, some of their patients back and forth. Mutual aid, because that's kind of important. That kinda helps track our unit availability. You can see we, as a service for Liberty County, we provided or were requested mutual aid two hundred and thirty-six times for the year. Our counterparts include Fort Stewart, Long County, Bryan County, McIntosh and Wayne County. Long County for us is the most commonly requested for mutual aid that we respond to. Now, do we always respond to mutual aid? No. We make sure our county's covered first. We do not accept a mutual aid call unless we have at least three units available in our own county before we take away one to respond mutual aid. So, we do not now. Now, if we accept that mutual aid call and two additional nine-one-one calls come out within ten minutes after we've taken that, we have no way of knowing that or preventing that. But the time the call for request of mutual aid comes out, we, we handle that accordingly if we have the resources. Our county requested and received mutual aid a hundred and seventy-four times throughout the year. And I'd like to give special thanks to Bryan County and McIntosh County because they're the ones that consistently help us. Typically, those are the ones that are coming to us for, for the mutual aid request.
The air vac, what has air vac done to the EMS service in Liberty County?
As far as air transport?
Yes, has it cut the travel time?
Um, you, well, you're talking for Life Star.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
So, for us as a service, when we feel that we need additional resources through flying a patient, we, we don't pick and choose. We don't ask for a particular one or the other. We simply request for the closest available helicopter. And it might be Life Star here in Heinzville, but they may not be available. So, then they would go down the chain and Air Vac out of Jessup would be the next closest one. If they're not available, then they seek even further out. So, it's kind of, I don't wanna say hit or miss, but it's just according to who's available. Now, to answer your question, I wouldn't say because we have that added benefit here in our county, we're not abusing it either. Just because it's right there doesn't mean, oh, well, we can just, now that they're here, we can just hopefully use that. We don't do that. Patients are only flown if they meet the criteria to be flown from a scene. So, to answer your question, we haven't really seen an increase as far as us utilizing air, air transport period. Not because they're not available, just because we, we still have a duty to act too and not just hand them over to there, so.
You get through, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I'm fine.
On, on the air vac, I notice people, they have the prescription to, I mean, they pay a monthly fee. For, I guess it's for Is it one of them or?
No. So, the way that works, and I won't speak for one or the other 'cause I'm not trying to sell one or the other. The way the subscription works is that Air Vac has a, they're a subscription-based company. You can still use them whether you have a subscription or not. If you choose to purchase a subscription, that's just like buying car insurance or like Aflac or something. It's just an added insurance that if you ever needed the capabilities, hopefully you don't, from a medical helicopter, those bills can be extraordinary. This is an assurance to say whatever your insurance doesn't cover, then you're covered by having the subscription service. Life Star, I don't believe does that, but here's the other catch. You may have the subscription with Air Vac, but if you're in a condition or a position, and me as the medic, you, you might not answer that question for me. I'm gonna get you the closest appropriate 'cause my goal is to get you there as quick as I can. I'm not going to, I'm not gonna know if you have a subscription or not.
I just, I, I noticed, you know, you call the different people and they say, you know, I've got a subscription for this, this and this. And I've heard them in Long County say, well, all we got to pay is twenty-five dollars a month or five hundred a year or whatever. I don't know what it is. But that was a, you know, I'm thinking, okay, you've got two here. Which one are you paying for? Just for curiosity.
Yeah, unfortunately, if it was the other, you know, the other service picking you up, you, you wouldn't be able to use that subscription towards that. The most important, let's show us the money, right? So, when we came to budget last year, I didn't have a clue what I was doing. We didn't have a budget to compare it to. We had not a lot to go by. So, at that time came at the time we sat down and we digested as much as we could with the very little information that we had. And we created a budget that we thought and hoped would match what we were gonna be projecting for the year. I'd like to say we did pretty good so far. We budgeted for just under three million and right now, we're just a little over half of that as per our January report budget. With that budget, one thing that I'm proud about, I know it doesn't sound like much, but we were able to uniform all of our staff members. So that all of our staff members look the same as they should and professional. That was a big thing that we didn't have before. If you didn't know, this EMS uniform is the most expensive clothing I will ever own. These pants are not cheap, neither are the shirts or the boots to go with it. So, adding that to help our employees, definitely, definitely, we appreciate that. Our fiscal year collections, obviously, we like to, to send our patients the bill if we provide a service. We were able to bill We were able to bill out, you can see the number there for billable claims, actual collected and versus what we had to write off, of course. And write-off is exactly what it sounds like. It's money we, we did not and could not collect. Any questions on, on that? To end the presentation, I'd like to remind everybody that EMS Week is coming up on us. These are a couple of our staff members here participating in some of our training that we do on a daily, try to do on a daily basis of some form or fashion. EMS Week is May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh. Every year, they pick a slogan to represent, and this year's slogan is "Where Emergency Care Begins." And that is all I have for, for this.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I think she's done a great job, or the county overall, in being able to fund and actually staying within your budget. Those numbers really look fairly decent. Really look good.
Thank you.
I applaud you.
But, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I will say this, from last year to present, and from some years back, you know, we're striving, we're, we're striving on a graduating scale to improve the quality of life for everyone. It's not going to come overnight.
No.
So, Crystal, thank you as being a part of the emergency service for Liberty County.
Thank you.
Just keep on, and then we'll see what else we can do.
Well, and, and just to add out there, I, I may be the one speaking here, but there's a whole team behind me.
Right.
That are, you know, I'll never say they're on the bottom because they're what keeps you on top. So, they are not beneath me by no shape or means. They're the ones out there in the streets running, running the calls and everything. And just to end this up, I have one more thing, and that is the MOU for rescue training, similar to what we did with Waycross and for what we did with Savannah Tech, well, Coastal Pines and Waycross, um, in Savannah Tech. It is another ride-along program where we have students. This one's, I'm a little biased on this one because this just happens to be where I became a paramedic. So, I do know the history with them and work with them wholeheartedly. We have current employees that are enrolled in these programs that we obviously would like them to be able to conduct their ride-alongs with us as well as possibly recruiting some more students from the current programs. So, unless you have any questions, it's going to be the same as we currently have in place for Savannah Tech and Coastal Pines.
Any questions about the MOU?
Need a motion? Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I'm second.
Motion second, we approve the MOU. And we hope you will find some good candidates from the.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Thank you all.
Show of hands? All right. Express to your, your team how much we appreciate.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you haven't noticed, if you haven't stopped by, our new station two is coming along wonderful. Cabinets, cabinets are going in this week, we saw that, that progressing, so.
Just watch out for two guys.
We saw.
Just watch out for two guys up here because they, they'll sneak in.
We already have the stuff on order to, to furnish that, so I got to make sure it'll be locked up if those guys will be walking in there.
Thank you, Crystal.
Do they still have the, or maybe, Don, you might know, do they still have the nursing program at the high schools?
I think they still do CNA.
Healthcare, they call it healthcare, it's not called nursing, it was called a healthcare pathway.
When we graduated, I know you worked at a hospital, I remember.
I think it's the CNA.
Yeah, they got CNA still.
Yeah, and I know they do LPM, but I don't know that they do that with the high school. Oh, and they still do the, um, as a matter of fact, because I, I have a child, fourteen, going into high school next year. We just sat through the meetings where they kind of talk about sending on which option you want to pursue in your career with, um, high school and if you want to look at getting things like that at Savannah Tech. And CNA was one of them. EMS is not, we, this is kind of ironic because they, depending where you work, depends on, some, some places, you can't even drive an ambulance until after the age of twenty-one, depending on what the county insurance is. So, there's things in place where you can attend an EMS school, EMT school, but you may not be able to test until age of eighteen. So, there's some stuff being worked on in the background.
Talking about the ride-along program, you know, and I was just thinking, um, of course, I mean, we have the summer students that come up and, and there may be people that's just interested in, you know, EMS that may, that may be in, in school. And I didn't know if that program was, I know when Donnie Strickland and Ms. Carter were there, they had, uh, you know, a nursing program.
Health occupations, they called it.
And that's what I was wondering if it's still.
They have a healthcare pathway.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would welcome the opportunity to let students ride with us. Just know that it's not always for the faint of heart. They, they, um, there may be things they might not, they may think they want to be in healthcare, but that may not be the healthcare they want to be in.
My county manager having palpitations, the administrator having palpitations over there.
Yeah, and we open that invite to any of you, if any of you would like to come and, and ride with us one day. We open that invite to you all too.
A lot of people think they want to be a policeman, you know, and then when they get out, they shoots at them, and that's the end of it. They go back to deliver newspapers, so. I just, uh, I knew that gives them the opportunity to see a little bit of it. If that's where they want to go, they go. Anyhow, I appreciate what you do.
Thank you, thank you all, have a good night.
Beers for the back home. Interesting. Mr. Wells.
Commissioner.
Hi, y'all.
I tell you what, this man here has sit here.
Now, I must make Joey mad, I see you weigh down a little bit this time, I don't know what I did. But we, uh, typically proposals to replace one of the back, because they're at transfer station. Yancey Brothers was scored the highest on the proposals, and that's the recommendation to go with them.
In your budget? In your budget?
Who the hell you did the scoring, scoring this time again?
I'm sorry.
Who did the scoring?
In three, right?
In, uh, Johnny Shot and Mr. Mosley.
I bet he got the highest number.
No, he does not.
I, I ain't going to throw him under the bus.
He got a sharp pencil that Mosley bought, I tell you.
Commissioner Gilligan, I, I remember it was one time, his scores were always the highest. Now. Miss, Miss, Mr., Mr. Red Pen himself, now.
Clinton just wanted a, a piece of equipment, that's why he scored so high.
And I, and, and I was going to ask that, I mean, how, how do you?
Mosley did, good lord, were y'all looking at the same thing?
Y'all beat me up so bad.
Well, I think what, if Clint says that's what he needs, and I believe that he wouldn't spend a dime more than what he needs, I look at his shotgun, and he needs a new shotgun, but to make a motion, we move forward with it, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Yancey Brothers, my friend, in the model one ninety-six, four seventy-six. All right, that's the motion on the floor, and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, bless your hands. All right, sir?
Okay.
Any announcements, Mr. Brown? Announcement, anything for the good order? All right. Chair, ten motion to adjourn.
Oh, so move.
Second, all in favor, show of hands.
Clinton, if.
Thank you, have a great evening.
If you weren't going to get it, we didn't let you go first.